Good morning, everyone. My colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Rice Singh. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here this morning to conduct a work session, voting session, on City Council Bill 12-0152, which is Transform Baltimore Zoning. The electronic files are being made available on the city council's website and can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is Also, a copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office, Natrona Austin, which is on the fourth floor, the first door to your left. At this time, I want to introduce my colleagues. To my far left, in the center, is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton. To her left is Councilman Nick Mosby. Across from Councilwoman Mosby is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To Councilman Bill Henry's right is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To Councilwoman Clark's right is Councilman Eric Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft. To my immediate left, the vice chair of the committee. We are also joined by Nick Blandy, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. And we have Paul Plymouth, representing the president, Bernard Jack Young. And behind me is Kara Kuntz, representing the president of the city council, Bernard Jack Young. We also have, to my immediate right, is the staff person, Jennifer Coats, on Transform Baltimore's committee. We also have... We also have the committee's attorney, Mr. John Willis, with us. Also, the executive director of Council Magic Services, Mr. Larry Green. The one and only grand law I have is please turn off your cell phones or put on vibrate to give courtesy and respect to those who are going to testify. We have a significant communications received between the last session and today. What is it? Okay. Submit it by council members, President Young, Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Craft, Councilwoman Mosby. Submitted by attorneys, business organizations, Ms. Jill Lempti, Mr. Craig Talbot, Mr. Stan Wilson, Ms. Caroline Hecker, Ms. Ciany Shapiro, Mr. John Will Hyde, Mr. William Strong, Mr. Mark Lauer, Ms. Basilia Kell, Ms. Sharon Greeda, Mr. Jim Dwyer, the Greater Remington Improvement Association, Reverend Roger Johnson. That's it? There's two. Documents received by October 19th, public hearings, submitted by Ms. Becky Lundberg Witt, Ms. Natasha Box Singleton, Mr. Alex Schub. Submitted by constituents, Ms. Cynthia Gross-Goss, Mr. Brent Fuller, Mr. Mark Brzezinski, Ms. Hope Jones, Mr. Brad, and Mrs. Erin Powell. And we received an additional letter from Joan Floyd, Paul Robertson, and Deborah Tepera. And regards to the text amendments. Okay. And we also received a letter today from Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. We will now begin to the committee, to the committee members and other council people. We are going to start on, we're going to begin, let me say this, we're going to begin on the text amendments. We did, we received Title V. We received Title V. We're not going to vote on Title V today. I want the committee to take it, take it home or to your office or to your man cave, whatever, and read it. And then tomorrow, when we come back, we'll vote on Title V. So we're not going to vote on the tables or the maps today until we get the text completed. So we will start on Title I.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt amendments number 1 through 37, which are found on pages 1 through 13 of the text amendments.
And we also join by, I'm sorry, the president of the city council, Bernard Jack Young.
Second.
Okay.
Now we can discuss them.
She's going to need a point of reference. So what he did is... Okay. All right. So Councilman Craft moved. We had a second from Councilman Henry. You got to vote a sheet for...
The banquet hall is going to stay in, and she'll take you.
Okay, this is Title I. We had a move by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry. Rice Singer votes yes, Councilman Craft.
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilman Branch. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title I passes. Now I need a motion to move Title II for the text. Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title II passes. We are now on Title III. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Councilman Craft?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, on Title III, it's been brought to my attention that there was an error in Title III, and on the errata sheet, we were supposed to receive, we had adopted the creation of the Office of People's Counsel, and that amendment has not been inserted there, and it's supposed to be on the errata sheet. So I would ask that it be included as set forth earlier in the Office of People's Counsel.
You want to make a...
I move to include the Office of People's Counsel as we had voted in our earlier work sessions.
Do I have a question on the motion? Do I have a second?
Wait a minute. I'm sorry.
Wait. Law Department, you have a question? Wait, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry. What are we on, please?
It was...
We have not seen the text of those amendments.
That amendment was adopted back in...
But wouldn't, we never received any text.
Okay, then we need to go back and get that text amendment. Mr. Chairman, I'll hold that back, subject to, subject at bringing that back in at the end. Thank you.
Title III?
Move Title III, subject to review of the People's Counsel.
Do I have a second on Title III? Second by Councilman Henry. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title III pass. We are now on Title IV.
Point of information, please.
You want to use the microphone, Councilwoman?
Yes, I will. There's a lot of pieces of paper on our desks. We are, if, we are, those of us who are following this, we're following it by way of the actual amendment sheets by title. Okay, I just want to clarify that...
Huh?
Yeah, no.
Sign your black book. That's the delineated part. Yeah, that's what we're going by. The amendments.
Amendments that are, as they are presented by Department of Legislative Reference in...
Yes, yes.
By title. Okay, thank you. I just need to be looking at the right book.
You're welcome. Do I have a motion to move Title IV?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Henry. Second by Councilman Craft. On Title IV, Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title IV is passed. Title, we're not voting on Title V. We'll have to come back to that. Title VI. Do I have a motion to move Title VI? So moved by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's second by, who said that? Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton? On Title VI. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title 16 moves.
Title VI.
Title VI. We are now on Title VII. Do I have a motion to move Title VII?
Move approval.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, seven, yes.
Yes. Do I have a second? Second by Craft?
Second.
Feels like old times.
This is Title VII. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title...
Yeah, nothing was... Clarification, please.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, no. It's okay. I'll check later.
We have to move to Title IX. Councilwoman Clark, you have...
You know...
We're skipping Title VIII. We need some more information. We're going to go to Title IX. You had a...
Okay, yeah, no. I just want to make sure the overlay definition of the names intact.
Yeah, well, we already...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
We're, we need more information on Title VIII, so we're going on Title IX. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, that was what I was going to ask you, is that are we, do we need more information or were there just not any amendments?
No amendments, please.
No amendments.
Okay. I wanted, I wanted the record to reflect that this title remains blissfully unsullied.
Do it, do it, note it.
There must be something wrong with it.
So now, we're on Title IX. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry on Title IX. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Title IX moves. Title 10. Do I have a motion on Title 10?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Henry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton on Title 10. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes and one absent on Title 10, which moves. Title 11. Do I have a motion on Title 11?
Move.
Title 11.
Moved by Councilman Henry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Rice, on Title 11. Let's see, Rice Singer votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent, and Title 11 moves. We are now on Title 12. Do I have a motion on Title 12?
Mr. Chairman?
Moved by Councilman Henry?
No. Mr. Chairman, I have additional amendments on Title 12 to offer. I believe they've been distributed already, he said, looking out at the audience to Mr. Berry. But they're amendments, they say at the top, "Draft amendments to Bill 12-0152. Amendment 1 for Title 12, 502(c) Exceptions and Requirements deletes the previously accepted committee version and substitutes. In this district, height limits are measured from the highest of (1), the closest public street, or (2), the average ground elevation within 30 feet of the proposed building." And amendment number 2...
Councilman, before we go any further, are these your amendments?
I agreed to move them. I agreed to offer them. Oh, they haven't been?
No, we don't have a copy. This is the first time we heard about it. We don't have it.
I...
Has law seen them?
Are there additional copies that can be... So we will, we will be circulating these momentarily. I'm sorry, I thought they had already been, I thought they'd already been circulated. So if there, if there was a letter, then maybe it's in the communications? My understanding is that these amendments reflect a compromise that had been, arrived at previously but was not reflected in the committee's original... No? Okay. Okay. Well, if, if there's no second, then we won't have to worry about any additional conversation on them. But I moved the amendments.
What is this?
This is... I know. I know. Sorry. Well, okay, well, can, but so, we aren't doing, but we are going to do this. Okay.
Where's...
Can you get to 13? I have an already approved thing that didn't make it on... This is, it came up yesterday. It was very...
Title 13.
It was approved by the committee. It didn't...
Not there yet.
Yeah, I'm just saying in advance, so I'll ask for your attention.
Okay. So that one?
I remember this one.
I don't even see 12 in here.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't even see, I got, here's Title 10. Is there 12? I don't see, we don't have Title 12, do we?
You should.
There's 11.
11 is not long.
Okay. What I want to ask is, I want to ask him if we can divide Title 12. Because I can't vote for the ECE amendments, but I'd like to vote for the rest.
So where's he at on this?
So I just want to, yeah, I just want to call for division.
What part is he on?
We can do it. Hold on a second. Let me find it. Hey, Bill. Bill, come here. I think, Bill...
When we get to 12, when we get to 12, I think you can say, I know, but...
Well, yeah, I was going to say, if we can...
You can just say, I'd like to register the... Just pick a certain... When you call the vote, when you consider... Bill's going to say, I believe it's such a number. He's going to make a vote for everything except...
I wonder why it's not working out?
Yeah, okay, okay.
I would recommend not to. This one.
You got it. You got it.
Yeah. What amendment is this? Amendment 1?
It's just communication.
Is there something to share? Share.
Get to the right title, like I just did, or tried to.
This has to be right.
But her big box one, I thought it was already...
And what do you see? Are we turning Title 10?
That's my name. Okay, okay, good.
Any failings for a second?
Uh? Okay, so we just have...
And then...
Second.
Karen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I get some work done while this is going on.
Streets, please. So if it actually still happens... So we should now... So you got... So... Okay. So we should...
Second. Second.
Just had to be doing this.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Like vehicle location.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. That they're actually going.
Okay, Councilman Henry? Are these already distributed to everybody?
Yeah. Everyone has a copy.
So this is what we have here.
Okay. We need to fail for a second.
All right.
Okay, just, I'll put the...
Henry.
Two of them now.
Started at school.
So that amendment isn't...
They cost $12 million.
Okay.
Okay.
We have too many here.
I'm sorry. We did today, we thought $12 million.
I got it.
Okay. So where's it at?
I'm sorry.
Set that after end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. On, okay, committee members, we're ready to reconvene. On Title 12, to Councilman Henry's amendments, it failed on a lack of a second. So now, what I need is a motion on Title 12.
Mr. Chairman, on the members' desks, there is, hold on one second, let me just pull it out. There is amendment to text on Title 12. It's entitled, "Port Covington District." If you look at the top, it's DLR format 419, October 16. It's entitled, "Port Covington District." This is an amendment to Title 12. I move this amendment.
Second.
Right, Title 12.
Title 12. Should move by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. And this is Port Covington amendments, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. The amendment passed.
Is that amended? You got those on the side of 12?
Now we got, do I have a motion on Title 12? As amended. Do I have a motion?
Move, move on Title 12, special purpose district.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman...
As amended, just...
As amended. Craft.
Okay.
Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. The amendment passed.
Is that amended? You got those on the side of 12?
Now we got, do I have a motion on Title 12? As amended. Do I have a motion?
Move, move on Title 12, special purpose district.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman...
As amended, just...
As amended. Craft.
Okay.
Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is a yes. Branch is absent.
And yes on the rest.
Okay, noted, you got it down here, okay. Henry, yes. Green, Middleton? Councilman Middleton? Middleton is yes, Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes, we have six yes with one absent on title twelve. Okay, now we are on title thirteen. Councilwoman Clark, you want to use the?
Mr. Chairman, um, sorry, I, we had to get this typed up. This committee, um, on November eighteenth, twenty fifteen, approved one amendment, um, on my behalf in this title thirteen. It has not appeared, uh, in the text of amendments, or maybe it has as being just one of those horrible things, but we did approve it. And I would ask that, um, it be included when we make a general motion on, um, title thirteen. Let me say what it says.
Okay, tell me, what, thirteen, what?
Thirteen. It is, um, it is T four thirty-two, it was approved, as I indicated.
Wait, hold on for one second, Councilwoman Clark.
Here we go.
It's a title, it's title thirteen, do we have copies of those amendments?
Here they are.
Well, we don't have them, so we can't vote, we have the amendment.
We have title thirteen in the book.
Do we have?
I do. Oh, you have to go, you gotta be fast. Well, all right then, Mr. Chair, if you decide to delay consideration of thirteen because some people don't have the amendments, I would ask that.
Councilwoman, hold on for one second.
It's not your fault. Thirteen and five, five got here this morning. Thirteen got here like in the middle of the night, a couple days.
Why we can't vote on it?
Because it came and you had to ask for it and stuff like that. Right, what is it anyway? What is thirteen? Oh, it's PUD. That's the one that basically, it's one of the ones that the president of the council basically wrote all the amendments.
Let's explain this.
I know it's just one of my horrible things that I always do, but what it is, it's. This is the one, she's arguing about the framing commission authority.
It's dated thirteen October. This was, I guess, last week. On the thirteen. Yeah, it wasn't in the book.
There's one thirteen, but I had other stuff.
And we wanted to be redone. Planning department is trying to take away.
And I don't want them coming to.
Do you have another one? Oh, you just got.
They didn't. Well, there's a legislative review.
No.
I know. I think, I think it serves.
Yeah, I mean, this is just completely redone.
No, I don't think so.
All of it's, all of it's, all of it's on that.
Needs things that aren't repeated elsewhere, it says it differently than how it's said elsewhere, it creates inconsistencies, which is the feeding of losses. She wants, wherever she wants, she wants to add something, she. Well, whatever, it's up to the committee. And you ought to fight this too. Although, yeah, Nate, where are you on that? Generally, by PUD, there is a difference between major changes.
Yeah, we've got a change.
It's, it's in there. And it's incorrect.
Say it three times, in different places. It's just inserted every other line.
So do we have a bedding pool going?
A dead pool.
A bedding pool. This whole process?
No, I assume it will get passed. It's out of my hands. All I can do is that. Or I can tell you the details. She's good. It's not enough, right. Yeah, I know.
Share, you coming back?
I, I don't think it.
Okay, we ready?
You said you will.
She, this is title thirteen, right?
Yes.
She's got, she's got, she's gonna.
We already voted for it, and he didn't put it in our, the amendments, because he didn't like it. Really?
Yes.
Warren, I'm gonna need your vote in a minute on a, on a motion. Please. All right, it's this.
All right, we are joined by Councilman, um, Warren Branch. We're, we're coming back to where we were on title thirteen. Councilwoman Clark, you have your amendment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go through the process, Councilman Branch could catch up.
Um, I'm sorry, I have to read it. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move adoption of amendment T four thirty-two, which was approved by this committee, um, on November eighteenth, twenty fifteen, but failed to appear in the text of the interlineated version of amendments.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. Second, my Councilwoman Middleton. You ready to vote? Council Riceinger votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry's yes, Middleton? Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby's yes, we have seven yes. The amendment passes. Now we need a motion to move thirteen as amended. Moved by Councilman Craft, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Henry.
What is it, what is it?
Riceinger votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch? Branch is yes, Clark? Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry's yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes, we have seven yes, title thirteen is moved.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Branch was just able to join us. I'd like to move that we open the record to allow him to cast affirmative votes in favor of the previous amendments upon which we voted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, pass it, motion's passed. Now, if I have everyone's attention, we are now on, Councilwoman Clark, we are now on title fourteen.
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend title fourteen.
You what?
I would like to amend title fourteen.
To, okay, what?
So, in the, um, communication book, as well as provided to the council members, I want to amend table fourteen to add new subtitle called, use standards for alcoholic beverage sales established. Uh, the subtitle will list, uh, the requirements for all deemed approved alcoholic beverage sales establishments. Uh, they must adhere, uh, in order to keep their deemed approval status. The subtitle will also, uh, list the requirements for new alcoholic beverage sales establishments, uh, and the rules that, um, apply to them. I would like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, amend, uh, title fourteen.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we see it. You moved, Councilwoman Clark?
Moved in properly second.
Okay, Clark, sec, uh, Law Department, you have a question on a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we were asked to review the extensive new provisions proposed by this amendment, and we are still in the process of doing that, we've already found some significant legal issues, um, which, you know, would require us to, um, find the amendment as potentially legally insufficient, so, um, we'd like maybe to defer this till tomorrow where we can provide a written response.
So you, your report, your opinion is it doesn't pass legal sufficiency?
Well, we've already found, identified multiple problems, we're not finished reviewing yet, but we will be by the end of today.
Hey, Mr. Chair, out of respect, I would ask for this committee, while we're already here, to, uh, continue down the path of voting on these amendments, um, regardless of the legal's opinion, um, it's coming out today, it's not as if we don't have time to properly change it, but the fact is, there's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of attention placed in this. I have my colleagues here ready to vote, and I ask that we move forward with the votes.
Councilman Craft has a question to the Law Department.
Um, Mr. Pedro, Councilman Mosby provided you with an alternative legal analysis of this legislation. Have you had an opportunity to review that legal analysis?
We reviewed that, and we identified the same issues, and that, that analysis actually was five years old. It was dated in twenty eleven, so it wasn't necessarily the most up-to-date legal analysis. Um, and it wasn't directed towards these exact amendments, it was just a general analysis of the, of the concept.
But the, the concept was approved, I mean, did you?
Um, well, we, we, we have issue with the legal analysis, we don't think it's entirely correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna vote, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Riceinger votes no, Craft?
Yes.
Vote, Craft votes yes, Branch?
What'd you say?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark? Clark is yes, Henry?
Henry.
I'm sorry.
Your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Middleton?
No.
No? Middleton is no, Mosby?
Yes.
Yes. So we have five yes with two no, amendment passes. Now, I need a motion to move, Bill. Councilwoman Clark? What she got?
Maybe it'll give me luck. Uh, members of the committee, uh, before you are deferred amendments, we have already adopted in this committee the definition of retail big-box establishment. The, um, but there are, and it has not showed up on the sheet because we need to make it a comprehensive whole, the way my colleague, uh, Councilman Mosby just did with his. So, in chap, in title fourteen, if you will go down to the last amendment, that's the one we're looking at now. Um, title fourteen, page two thirty, after line thirty-two, prior to fourteen dash three-three-five, retail goods establishment with alcohol sales, on page two thirty-one, insert the following language. "When reviewing a conditional use application for a proposed retail big-box establishment use, a finding shall be made that the proposed use will not have an undue adverse economic impact, uh, on the community. Um, this finding shall be based upon data provided by an economic and fiscal impact study conducted by a qualified analyst selected by the city, well, there's, and shall be paid for by a fee assessed to the applicant." Um, so that's what we would call a use standard. I would like to move approval of the use, of that use standard, please.
Do I have a second? Second, my Councilwoman. Councilman Branch, correct? Okay, ready, ready to take a vote on Councilwoman Clark's amendment? We're missing Councilman Craft.
Are we missing Councilman Mosby? Um, let me just fill in the time with words, and hoping I don't need too many. There's a rule in the city council, um, very interesting one, you can't vote unless you're seated. Um, so that's what I mean. And I don't even know how he's gonna vote, but, um, basically, big-box stores are defined as seventy-five thousand square foot single, um, use. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, as soon as Councilman Craft takes a seat. Okay, Craft, you say no? Okay, Council Riceinger votes no, Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch is yes, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes, Councilman. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is yes. So, we have five yes with two no's. The amendment passes. Is there any other amendments before we vote the bill?
Oh, we, no, the other amendment for big-box is in the tables, and then I'll be done. Then we'll be there.
Okay, well, we're not the tables yet.
I know.
Okay.
It's on the same sheet, so keep the sheet.
So, do I have a motion to move Title 14 as amended?
So, moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark? Before, okay, before we move forward, Title, on Title 14, Amendment 1, banquet halls, everybody good with that?
Yeah, yes, I am. Avery does not like it.
And also with Amendment 26, right?
Yeah, there's a between.
Everybody good with that? Okay, good. All right, so, Councilwoman Clark, you moved Title 14. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Mosby. Riceinger votes yes. This is Title 14.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Craft is yes. Are we ready? Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Title 14 moved with the amendments. Without one in 26. Now, we're on Title 15, correct? Do? Do I have a motion to move Title 15?
Uh, move to approve Title 15.
Move by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Branch. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby's yes. We have seven in favor. Title 15 is moved.
Fourth Street parking. What? What? Oh, yeah, they did, I don't know. I went one of them, I.
I'm going to move that without Amendment 6, without.
14.
Okay, all right. But what about this one here? This one here, you're going to have to share.
Ooh. Don't take that out.
Nobody's saying that. That's one issue. Okay, we're just going to have to discuss.
Yeah, what can you call it, number six?
17, yeah, yeah.
Uh, 14?
We got to go back to 14.
14, okay.
Okay, we need to, committee, I have your attention, please.
Showtime.
We need to go back to Title 14.
Signs.
For a correct, we have some text amendments, which is technical. It's Title 14 supplemental. Do I have a motion to move those?
Oh, wait, don't.
Technical supplementals. Do I have a motion to move those?
But it's not the, that window sign thing. Oh, move it.
Move by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Title 14 supplementals is, is moved. We are now on Title 16.
What?
Uh, we have to, to move Title 16 without Amendment 6 and 14.
Wait, no, wait, no, wait. What happened to 15? We did, we did 15? All right. Where are we now?
Has the committee reviewed those?
What, uh, are we, where are we?
Councilwoman Clark, we're on Title 16, and without Amendment 6 and 14. Councilman Henry?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my binder has two copies of Title 16 instead of a 16 and a 17. Does anyone have an extra?
17?
Copy of 17?
Just a minute.
I'll, I'll give you mine. I know what it says. I don't want your 16.
I'm not, I'm not giving it to you. The surest way to, to have an unhappy rest of the day is for you to have two Title 16s.
Yeah, because it's so, so much more paper.
So, what does he care? So, what is? Those were all those objections, but they can't.
No, no, Title 17.
If you have a 17, I'll take it. I gave him my 17, I'll take one. Sure. But it's no rush.
Mary Pat, you, you good with the move? You want to move this, these two without?
Oh, yeah, you mean, I'll, that's.
Okay, do I have a motion to move without 6 and 14?
Yeah, in other words.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, now, wait a, the, what?
Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, sir.
When it, hold it.
Which title are we moving?
We're on, God's.
Title 16 without 6 and 14. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Henry. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven. Title 16 is passed without Amendment 6 and 14. Now, we are on Title 17.
They're not going to mess with her.
Councilwoman Middleton, I think you may have an interest on this one. Yeah, Title 17, to be moved without, without Amendment 6, this is permitted alcohol and cigarette advertising signs.
Six is your windows, 15 percent. Six is windows.
So, do I have a motion to move without 6? Is there a question on that motion?
No, 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 no. You want to move 6.
Okay.
Second.
So, Councilwoman Middleton wants to move 6?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, perhaps if the motion could be reframed as just moving Title 17 and?
You got it, I can't hear you.
Maybe the motion should just be then move Title 17 in its entirety.
Okay. All right.
I do have an amendment for Title 17.
What you got? We can, I can only, one at a time.
But Number 6 is part of this package.
Councilwoman Clark, one at a time. Let's.
Number 6 is part of the package that's already been approved, and I would like to leave it that way.
Okay, so, I get that part.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mosby, what do you?
I have one, one small amendment for Title 17. It's also pertaining to window signage. It's consistent with Council, Councilwoman Middleton's bill. It's to amend Title 17 to limit window signage to 15 percent from the proposed 25 percent. It's in a different part. It's in 17-816. So, I move to, move the amendment.
Second. So, you're moving 17, right?
No, I, I amended 17.
You what?
I amended 17.
Okay, do we have a copy of the amendment?
Yes, everyone has a copy of my amendment. It's all in, it's all in the communications book, as well as been emailed to everyone. Yes, this is all part.
Okay, do I have a, Councilwoman Mosby?
It's been moved and seconded.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Henry. This is, is this amendment there?
17.
Okay. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Henry's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. The mo, the amendment passes. Oh, now, we got to move 17 with the amendment. Huh? Do I have a motion, Councilwoman Middleton, do we have a motion to move the bill as entirety with the amendment from Councilman Mosby, Mosby on 17?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Councilman, Councilwoman Middleton, do I have a second?
Second by Clark.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Wait, Councilwoman Clark, you say second?
I can say second.
Okay.
But I'm also happy that including number, um, 6, but I guess I vote without saying.
It's entirety. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Seven yes. 17 passes, moves. Title, Title 17 moves. Now, we are on Title 18. And on Title 18, just spare us a few for a moment.
Hospital. We want to move this 18 to.
Okay, we do have it right there.
Is there any amendments for 18?
Okay. These are, this is, come on the side. This is, these are the ones on 18.
Yeah. Yeah. So, John can identify problems with the law. And just read. It's not the first. Like, potentially, issues like the exception. So, are they deferring such? And there's some issues. So, for, and then for number five. She. Something that is, I cannot. So, we track. So, we're talking. So, we're talking. So, are they deferring such? And there's some issues. So, for, and then for number five. She. Something that is, I cannot. So, we track. So, we're talking. So, we're talking. So, we're talking. So, we're talking. So, are they deferring such? And there's some issues. So, for, and then for number five. She. Something that is, I cannot. So, we track. So, we're talking. 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 So, we're talking.
Okay, committee, we are now on Title 18, which is the non-conformities, and on Title 18, dealing with what's the State Department, the Law Department, with the different agencies, do I have a motion to move Title 18 without Amendment 1, 2, 3, and 5?
Mr. Chair, I do have one amendment to add to Title 18 as well.
Yeah, what, so, what?
So, it's on the members' desk. It's to amend Title 18 to define the nature of deemed-approved alcoholic beverage sales establishments. It's, it's on the desk, as well as been emailed. I move to move amendment, deemed-approved language.
Okay, hold on for one second. What amendment is that?
It's 18.
That's Amendment 18?
Yes. The ti, it's in Title 18. It's my amendment four on my documents that I've passed out.
Can you repeat that?
It's Amendment 4 in the documents that are on the members' desk, as well as have been emailed to you. It's titled "Deemed Approved Language." It's to amend Title 18 to define the nature of deemed-approved alcoholic beverage sales establishments.
Huh?
I moved, and I think it's been properly seconded.
Councilwoman Craft, you have a question?
It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that we adopted all of Councilman Mosby's amendments as a package when we adopted everything before, so that we adopted the amendments with regard to alcohol and all the amendments that went with that to, to enable?
For the record, I would like to explicitly state per every title, we only have two more to go through, and they're pretty short amendments, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're good.
Yeah, I would, I just wanted to explicitly ensure that we're.
Unfortunately, I made that mistake with a, a series of amendments around tables, and the, the, as a result, three of the parts of that amendment never showed up as approved by the committee, and so, I think it's very, I wish that I had been careful enough to do that, and I'm glad that Councilman Mosby is. So, thank you for, one at a time, as well as overall.
Okay, moved by Councilman Mosby, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Amendment passes. Now, I need to.
That is yes. That is what, that's what we're voting on now, Avery. Huh? That is what, that's what we're voting on now, Avery. Huh? Yes, yes.
If I could have the committee's attention?
Mr. Chairman, I move, um, section eighteen as amended without amendments one, two, three, and five.
Moved by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Middleton? Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Eighteen moves without one, two, three, and five. Councilwoman Mosby?
I move to adopt Title eighteen.
Second.
You already did that, didn't you? That's the entire package, correct? You're moving the entire pack.
Oh, yeah, well, based off of, uh, Councilman Craft, yeah. Well, right now I'll move to, uh, move the entire package that's on the members' desk. It's, uh, Amendment one through eight.
Okay.
All right. So I moved to move the, uh, entire package.
Okay, do I have a second?
Of what?
I need it. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Branch. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark? Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton's yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. Seven. Uh, so eighteen moves. That's, that's most, yeah, okay. That's Councilman Mosby's package on the amendments. Okay. Now we are on Title, the last Title nineteen.
But we haven't, have we approved Title eighteen?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did.
I thought we approved...
No, we...
Right before that, we did.
Councilwoman, you were talking to someone. That's...
I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
We, we just approved the entire packets, package.
Your entire package of amendments.
Right.
And we also, before that...
Councilwoman, I'm trying to explain to you that we voted for Title eighteen.
And then after that, you buy...
We voted on Title eighteen.
And then we voted his package.
So, Mr. Mo, Councilman Mosby's package was then voted on as a whole.
So now we're on Title nineteen.
Move nineteen.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Craft. Second by Councilwoman Clark. Right singer votes yes. Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right singer votes yes. Councilman Craft? Councilman Craft is yes. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is yes. Seven in affirmative. Title nineteen is moved.
So they, okay, so these, how these have to pass?
It, but your effective date is this now. This is code.
We only what they are? Do they have all that?
I thought it was six months from the date of...
Okay, we're on ten?
Okay. Okay, all right. Do we have to go back?
Okay, we're on Title nineteen. On Title nineteen, committee members, Councilwoman Clark?
I'm sorry, what?
We have, is your... Okay. We voted on nineteen, but we have sep, a separate pa, package of amendments brought to my attention. It's the gas electric standards, design standards, port Covington, intervening ordinance, and what's this one here? And miscellaneous. Um, do I have a motion to move, move that package?
Okay, here's a leap of faith.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Seconding it.
Councilwoman Middleton?
That happy.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark seconded. Councilwoman Middleton moves. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch, yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Henry?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I have lost track of where we are.
We don't know. We're just taking a leap. Gas electric standards, miscellaneous.
After, after nineteen.
Okay, I'm sorry. The next thing I had in my book after Title nineteen was miscellaneous misnomers and assistencies.
That's it.
That's it. That's part of it.
Gas standard, gas electric standards, design standards, intervening ordinances, and miscellaneous misnomers.
Are we adopting the design standards?
So, Councilwoman Henry, are you?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes.
Pass.
You pass? Abstain, right? Okay. We have six yes with one abstain. Moves.
Now what do we have? No, no, we're not going to show this.
I never even read that. I didn't even have an amendment in there.
So we have to do five.
I never looked at that. I didn't even read it. Did we adopt the design standards? I thought they were not abstaining. What are we doing with them? I thought they were gonna do them on their own.
Yeah.
We just adopted them?
Committee cap, Committee Karen Kuntz has the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kara Kuntz, on behalf of, um, Council President. With the Planning Department, we have an updated version of the tables that were distributed three weeks ago. Um, they aren't substantively changed. They are corrected. Um, like there were headers and, um, erroneous references, cross-references to the text. We fixed that. So we have paper copies here today and we'll post them online, but I'd like to go ahead and give those out before, um, the committee moves forward on considering the tables tomorrow.
All right, I'm sorry, we couldn't hear very clearly here.
Can't hear anybody.
You have a substitution for the tables. Um, in your binder, the tables are dated, uh, October third, I believe. And you are being handed a packet today that has a footnote date of October nineteenth. These are the changes that are mostly format, cross-references. I did find a little bit of a cut and paste error in the Key Highway Urban Renewal Plan. Pieces were missing. I've talked to Councilman Costello about that. The, uh, Council Services checked some items as well as legislative reference. So just make sure you're looking at the bottom date there.
People's counsel. Apologies, didn't punch holes in them.
That's all right. That's a lot of holes. Um, Mr., point of information, please? Yeah, so these, um, that we have just been handed by Planning, and thank you for that, for, you know, standardizing and put, you know, all that work that's really so important. Is this what we're gonna be working off tomorrow when we come in to do and talk about map amendments?
Yes.
So this is the packet?
Yes.
And, okay, so, and the second thing is, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, this is probably a time then as we close down and the next thing is map amendments. I have a letter before the committee. And I know it's in the packet or acknowledged in the packet. Just let me have mine right now. Yeah. The, um, there, there was a, there was a vote on a, there was a whole package of about twelve, a dozen, um, amendments on what is called the Commercial One Village Center zoning district. We'll get to it tomorrow. Um, we did approve what we thought were all the different numbers that pertain to what was two pages of amendments presented to the committee. But because I thought we had adopted everything that we needed to that was presented to us by the Roland Park Civic League and, uh, as their amendments to that zoning district, there were three issues that weren't covered and so did not appear in the, um, tables for C one V C. And so I would ask today just that the committee approve, um, uh, excuse me while I look at what I called it.
That's tables. We could do that.
Uh, yeah, no, just, I don't, I don't wanna vote on it. I just want to ask for today for, uh, I'd like to move the recall of the three missing amendments to this package for C one V C. And they are, and you have your sheet, says it.
Yeah. Councilwoman, I thought we discussed this yesterday. We're gonna do the tables tomorrow so we can, you can bring that up tomorrow so we can study this and look at it tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I just didn't wanna take up any time tomorrow except voting on actual amendments, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Land Use and Transportation Committee will go on recess. Our next sess, our next session on the bill will be tomorrow, Thursday, ten twenty at ten A.M. I wanna thank everyone for attending today's transportation, Land Use and Transportation, voting session and work session.